Call the meeting to order, please. That's how you do it. Thank you. This is a Village of Riverside Board of Trustees regular meeting for Thursday, June 15, 2017. The time is about 7:02. Please call the roll.
President.
Here.
Trustee Powell.
Here.
Trustee Jisa.
Here.
Trustee Valerie.
Here.
Trustee Lumston.
Here.
Not present this evening, trustee Setteby. Joining us by telephone this evening is trustee Peters.
And trustee Peters is joined by telephone due to medical reasons. Does any trustee have a reason to object? There is none. Welcome trustee Peters. And congratulations.
Thank you.
She had a little baby boy. Okay, if you'll please rise with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome to everyone who is here this evening and those watching at home. If you are here tonight and you would like to address the board at any time, I ask that you be recognized by the president and that you make your comments from the podium so that the folks at home can hear and see what you have to say. First up this evening are presentations and public comments, and we have a very special evening, which I think is probably why a lot of the folks are here with us tonight. It's a department, Police Department Promotions and Swearing In of a New Officer, Chief Weiselman.
Thank you, President Salz, trustees and manager Francis. It really is my honor to lay out what we'll do in front of you maybe for the next 15 minutes. So, I've worked out with our clerk that each officer is going to come up and be sworn in individually by the clerk, their wives or whoever they would like from their family will come up, pin their star on them. They'll come back and we'll do it sequentially. We're going to start with Chris Kudla and move up. And then I will come back to the podium after the swearing in takes place, and I will brief the board on each of these officers, their careers, how they came here, and they can address the board if they want for a short period of time. So if that meets with your approval, Mr. President, I would ask that the clerk come up and we would start with Chris Kudla. He could step up. And Kathy will do the swearing in.
I need you to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Christopher Kudla, do solemnly swear.
I, Christopher Kudla, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully perform the duties.
And I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of the office of patrol officer.
Of the office of patrol officer.
For the Village of Riverside, Illinois.
For the Village of Riverside, Illinois.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And you may sign your signature.
Chris, you gotta help her up.
I did practice, by the way.
Oh, she's got it.
Finally.
Thank you.
I, John Cairo, do solemnly swear.
I, John Cairo, solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully perform the duties.
And I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of the office of Sergeant of Police.
Of the office of Sergeant of Police.
For the Village of Riverside, Illinois.
For the Village of Riverside, Illinois.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
You might have two policemen there.
I, Frank Lara, do solemnly swear.
I, Frank Lara, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully perform the duties.
And I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of the office of Lieutenant of Police.
Of the office of Lieutenant of Police.
For the Village of Riverside, Illinois.
For the Village of Riverside, Illinois.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
I, William Gutcheck, do solemnly swear.
I, William Gutcheck, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully perform the duties.
And I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of the office of Deputy Chief of Police.
Of the office of Deputy Chief of Police.
For the Village of Riverside, Illinois.
For the Village of Riverside, Illinois.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
That's upside down.
So, Mr. President Salz and trustees, I thought I would tell you about the officers individually coming up. As you know, this is kind of rare for us to have this many promotions and on you hire. So I'd ask that Chris come up and stand next to me. So, Chris Kudla is our newest officer. He actually started in March. I want to tell you how he came here. So Chris worked for many years for the Village of Lyons, for 12 years, and then he was caught up in their reorganization and was one of the 10 or 11 officers that was let go unfortunately. But, to his credit, he secured a job with the city of Montgomery. So for the last two to three years, Chris has been working in the Montgomery Police Department. And when we tested, he tested with us because he liked this area. And I know that because one of the very unusual things about Chris was, we had 180 applicants to apply. And he was number one on the written exam. He was number one on the assessment. He was number one on the oral interview. And when he came to the oral interviews, our police and fire commissioners, as you know, they do the interviews. I really sit off and I give them the background information. And at the end of Chris's interview, the commissioner said in kind of a polite way, "You know, Chris, you're not the usual candidate in front of us." Which really meant, "You're a lot older than the ones that I usually get here." And that's a nice way that they said that. And they like, "You know, what drew you here?" And Chris told our commissioners without hesitation that he always wanted to work here, loved the area, even loved it when he worked in Lyons, got a little bit discouraged when he got caught up in the layoffs that happened in Lyons, was able to get himself together, got the job in Montgomery. And when he saw Riverside was testing, he took the exam. And he competed with 180 other people who, some right out of college, some right out of the military. So, he was very mature. They noticed that right away. He was trained. He came to us academy certified already. And he's just a fantastic individual. He lives in Romeoville. His family's here. I'll have him come up and talk to the board. He can introduce his family. He, you know, one thing, so, he's been on since March, right? And he's an experienced officer. That's my code for he's mature. He walks by my office every day. This is somebody that's been a policeman already for 14, 15 years. When I see him, he stops, he sticks his head in my window, he says, "Good morning, chief." Or if I'm there at nighttime, he says, "How you doing, chief?" He has a smile on his face. And he walks by and I look, I'm like, "Wow, that's awesome. I got somebody who's been on 15 years somewhere." And he comes in and he says hello to me, and he loves coming to work. So it very much excites. He's a fit. He's already blended with the officers. In fact, many of the officers knew him from when he worked in Lyons. So, I think he's fit, and I think our police and fire commission did a very good wise choice. Although, you know, he did compete. He competitively competed against all those officers. He had to score top in the written, he had to score top in the assessment, and he scored top in the oral interview. So that speaks a lot to his credit. So, I'd ask Chris to come up and maybe he can introduce his family to you and if he has anything to say.
Thank you, chief. So my family is here with me is my wife, Tricia. Actually, next month, we're celebrating our 10-year wedding anniversary. My mother, Virginia. My father, Dennis. And then my two beautiful daughters, Amanda in the front and little Ashley here in the second row. And then Amanda's boyfriend, Andrew, came along with us too. Like the chief said, my law enforcement career has been very challenging. It's had some hurdles and had some difficult times. But the old saying that nothing doesn't happen for a reason really came to pass with me ending up here. I went to Montgomery because it was the first job that I could get at the time. Had to provide for my family, obviously. And when this opportunity came, I jumped at the chance and I feel like I'm back home. So I'd like to thank the board and thank the Village of Riverside for giving me this opportunity. Thank you.
I'd ask John Cairo to come up. So John is being promoted to Patrol Sergeant. John is a wonderful individual to work for, and many of you may know John is a resident. John's family is here tonight too, and I'll have John introduce his family when he comes up. But John's held many positions in the department. He was in a, he has been an explorer, post-adviser. He worked on the Wedge Task Force. He has a bachelor's degree. He just graduated from Lewis University. He went, he earned his bachelor's degree while working here in Riverside on shift. And he is currently going for his master's degree at Lewis University in Romeoville. He continues to do that while he works shift work. And I think John realizes the value of that education because he ended up number one on the sergeant's list. He scored the highest written score, assessment center, and oral interview. These are all competitive testing. And, you know, John is a really people person. And I'll give you an example of that. So, the newspaper a week or two ago ran an article about us participating in when we gave these Slurpee tickets away to the kids. And John Cairo was featured in the photo that the newspaper took. And as I was walking to the parking lot the other day, a mother was walking her child in the stroller and then had the younger child on a bicycle and they were going to the library. And they stopped me and they wanted to know if Sergeant, well, they said Officer Cairo was working for the Slurpee Patrol. And so they recognized him. And John was not working that day. So unfortunately, I had to go in and get another officer to come out and give that. Because the five-year-old that was on the bike, still had the training, was a female, had her helmet on. So we give out these Slurpee tickets for her. But they recognized John. In fact, there might even be some of John's neighbors from Fairbanks Road here. But he's very dedicated. I have the highest respect for somebody that can put themselves through college while they're working shift work here. And now he continues to go for his master's degree. So, I have a healthy respect for that. And he's a 4.0 student, so really, really challenging. So John is going to be assigned to one of the shifts. I don't know what that is yet because it's by seniority, but it'll happen very soon. So I'm very happy that he's joining our management team in a small department like this. The sergeants are really actually part of the team. So I'd ask John to come up and he can introduce his family, and if you want to address the board, then you can.
If any of you approach me about Slurpee tickets, you better have a valid license as well. I want to introduce my wife, Ann. And that was my son earlier that was not in a good mood right now. I want to thank my wife. She's been very supportive when I started school, when I started going back, when I obtained my bachelor's degree, and while I worked for my masters. I want to introduce my parents, Karen and Joseph. And my in-laws, Pat and Joan, are here as well. And as you heard, the rest of them, the 200 block of Fairbank, known as the 200 Club here. I want to thank them as well, as well as all the other police officers that showed up for this tonight. I want to thank the board as well. You guys have done a lot to allow us to attend school, to better ourselves as police officers, as people, and move forward. And bar none, anybody who does take advantage of that, it pays off for the village 10 times over. Ben Salz, I want to thank you personally, and Jessica. You guys have been very supportive of the police department over the years, and it's a pleasure to work here. It's a pleasure to work for the residents here. Thank you very much.
So I have Lieutenant Lara up here. It's going to be difficult for me to remember their ranks for all this time. But, so, Frank has been on the department probably almost as long as I have. I think he came on in 87. He has held positions of patrolman, OIC, which is a corporal's rank, sergeant, detective sergeant, and he's done a fantastic job. So our detective sergeant is an extremely important position because they're in charge of all criminal investigations. And Frank has developed a working relationship with all our neighboring communities. He is currently, until today, or maybe even a little bit longer, the lead detective for the MCAT group, which is the major case assistance team. So if they have an incident, he helps lead that unit. He has some of his, not only are their coworkers here from Riverside, but there are many police officers here that Sergeant Lara, now Lieutenant Lara, has worked with over the years in investigations. They're here. So, he's going to be stepping into the role of operations lieutenant, which is a much more administrative, but he's perfect for the position. You should know that Frank also competitively competed for that. We have an outside company that does the testing. They did the testing, the assessment center, and then our police and fire commissioners do the oral interviews. So he ended up number one on the written exam and on the assessment center, which was very difficult. Frank is a graduate of Police Staff in Command at Northwestern University. He's also a graduate of the Midwest Leadership Institute, which I have not been to, but I understand is very difficult because our manager's been there. And it's also eye-opening. So he's stepping up into a leadership position. He's stepping up into an administrative position. He is a detail guy. So when he got detective sergeant, maybe some of them didn't really learn because he's a cross the T, dot the I guy. And that's what you need in this position that he's taking in, because detail is very important. So I'm thrilled to have Frank on my management team. And as you know, his wife Cheryl is here. She is one of our telecommunications, longtime telecommunications. So I'll step aside, have Frank come up. He can introduce his family, and he can address the board.
Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity from the board. I appreciate this opportunity to make the village shine because that's what I'm here for, to make the police department shine. I want to introduce, first of all, my two daughters in the back, Samantha and Nicolette, and my granddaughter, Maddie, who's around somewhere. She's one and a half. I want to introduce my mother-in-law, Trixie, and all my sisters. I have five. And my mom, my beautiful mother, Pat. I want to introduce my mom, Pat. And of course, I want to introduce my beautiful wife, Cheryl, who I adore, who's my partner. And I just want to take this opportunity to thank, again, thank the board. As the chief said, I'm very detail-oriented. I cross the Ts and dot the Is, and that's what I strive to put to the patrolmen. So that's what I'm trying to achieve for the department. I want to make our department professional. I want that one step closer to being perfect, because that's what I strive to be sometimes. And thank you again to the board. And pops, I did it.
So Bill Gutcheck, he is the new deputy chief. Bill was the operations lieutenant. And the deputy chief is an appointed position, so that's my selection. And I selected Bill Gutcheck. He's been on the department since 1988. Am I getting that right? I'm not getting that old. He's held every rank. He was patrolman. He was a field training officer. He was a OIC, which I said is the corporal rank. He was patrol sergeant, and he was the operations lieutenant. Bill is also a detail guy. Sometimes Bill is a background guy, but he's going to have to be up a little bit more out in front. But some people like operating like that. But he's accepted this position, and he knows fully what's involved in it. And he has the respect of the officers. Bill is also a graduate of Northwestern Staff in Command. He's also a graduate of the FBI Leadership Academy. He's also a graduate of the Midwest Leadership Institute. He's received numerous awards and commendations from the department and outside agencies, including the Cook County Sheriff's Award of Merit. And you should know that in these promotions, even though this is an assignment, I discussed all my decisions with the manager. And she quizzed me too. But that's good, because these are people that are probably going to be in place when I'm gone. At least some of them will be. And really, my, one of my goals is to at least put people in position who, whatever happens, you can rely on them to run the department for a short period of time, a long period of time. If you need to gap it, whatever you need to go. That does not mean I'm leaving. It just means, it just means part of my job is mentoring and to ensure there's a succession. And then whatever, however those chips fall, they fall. So I will step aside and let Bill introduce his family and address the board, but I can assure you, you have a dedicated deputy chief who is ready for that position.
Thank you. My wife is stuck in the hallway there. She's got somewhere. But along with her, my sister and brother are here, Adrian and Steve. And then my son Kenny is in the back, my son Billy, Randy, and my grandson Kayden, who's sitting there staring at me. There she is. She made it in there. So I really appreciate them coming. I give the most thanks to my bride, because she tolerates me and everything that I go through, how the job affects me and everything. But I really want to thank the village president, the board, and the village manager for this opportunity. But got a little something to say, and it's about leadership and how I promote leadership so much. I'm an avid reader. A year, year and a half ago, two years ago, I read a book. It moved me. I keep a copy of it on my desk. But in this book, it talks about leadership and how to push leadership downward, down to the lowest individual, how to develop eminent leaders. And after I read this book and after I started observing what was happening around me, I firmly realized that we've been doing this right along. And a prime example is there's, there's an incident that happened here about a week and a half ago. And I, after the incident happened, it was a pretty stressful event, and I pointed out to the chief as I was walking past his office. I said, "Look what's going on here." And he's like, "What?" And I said, "Everybody knows what their job is, what they're doing." And everybody was just functioning at a completely different level. There wasn't, there was very little guidance, very little direction, and I was confident enough to know at that incident that if I wasn't there and Lieutenant Lara wasn't there, the incident would have handled itself fantastically, because we pushed that leadership skills downward already. And just today, myself and Lieutenant Lara were reviewing a report that came in about training an officer. And I mentioned to him, I said, "You know what? I said, "This is fantastic that we didn't have to sit there and say that these things needed to be done. They were done. They were already done." And that, that shows me that we're pushing that leadership downward and we're developing our personnel from the bottom up. So someday, when we're not here, I can assure you that we're going to have good people in solid positions to lead this department into the future. I firmly believe, and I will continue on this path, to develop our people into these positions. So in the future, 10, 15 years from now, long after I'm retired, I can assure you that you're going to have a good, solid police department there.
So in closing, I'd like to actually mention a couple of things. One, I would be, while not a promotion, you know Sergeant Coder is still out there. Is he there? So with the void that's taking place in the detective sergeant's position, I allowed all of our sergeants to compete for the position of detective sergeant who wanted that position. And we have selected Sergeant Leo Coder to lead criminal investigations. Leo is a patrol sergeant now. He'll be July 9th, he'll be transitioning out Sergeant Coder, and he will be going to lead the criminal investigations. He's not on the agenda because it's not a promotion, but I can assure the board, it's a very important position, because he oversees all criminal investigations. So I would like to congratulate Leo on his assignment to detective sergeant. And I'd also like to just say that there are a lot of, our former deputy chief, Bob Gordon, is here. Our former deputy chief, Bill Legg, is here. Our former commander, Mark Tuma, who left Riverside to go take a police chief's job in Cloverdale, California, and is now retired from Cloverdale, California, and living back in New Lennox, Mark? Mokina? Is here. I saw our former village president, Joe Dean Ataly, who was on the board when some of these officers were hired as patrolmen. So I think that speaks volumes. Yeah, Bob Gordon, our former deputy chief. I think they came back for this event, because when we're done here, we promise not to be noisy in the hallway. We're going upstairs to the Row 22, so to have a little reception, so the board can continue their business. But I'm so proud of these officers, and they're going to be part of the management team, and I can be sure that the village trustees and our residents are very, very proud of them. So with that, unless you have any questions, Mr. President, or trustees, I will...
I don't have any questions, but I would like to say a couple of things. I mean, I've known a lot of these, these men that you've promoted tonight for quite a while now. And looking out at this audience, the families, the former officers that have come all this way, I mean, we were reminded, as deputy chief mentioned, about a week and a half ago, close at home, and we were reminded what just happened in Washington, DC. How quickly a routine day can turn into something else. And I want, you truly are Riverside's finest, and you represent that. And I just want you to know on behalf of the board, and I know all of the residents, how much we respect and appreciate what you do, and that you're out there protecting us every single day. So thank you.
Thank you.
So they might be going off now to a nice reception.
This is the fifth year of a five-year contract with Lauderbach and Amon. And I'd like to present Matt Barron, the lead auditor on...
As much as you can, that'd be great. Thank you.
Sorry, I don't carry that well. But Matt Barron, the lead auditor on this, will also do a quick presentation of this year's financials. And if you have any questions for us, please let us know.
Hello, everybody. Thanks for having me. Last year, I was here when there was another police presentation after the robbery that occurred, I believe. And you were recognizing the police officers that helped prevent that or caught the perpetrators. So there was a lot of people here that night, and I cleared out the room right afterwards. So I cleared out the room again. So I feel like I really got this thing down. Anyway, so instead of Matt Barron, I'm the audit partner to help oversee this audit this year for the year end 2016. I'm going to go over a high level of the audit report. And if any point you guys have any questions, please feel free to let me know and I'll answer them at any point in time. So I'm going to start with the audit report itself. I'm going to flip through a few pages. I'll highlight them for you. And stop me if you have any questions. So the first page I'm going to point to is about five, six pages in, is this page right here, the Certificate of Achievement Award. Last year, we submitted the village's audit for the GFOA certificate of achievement. They, we received it. What that means is we added a transmittal letter, which is right ahead of it in these audit reports, that talks about the village, the long-term forecast, the profile of the village and other things like that. And also a stat section in the back that's got like a 10-year history. And then we submit this report out to an independent board with the GFOA. They review it, make sure everything is in compliance with governmental accounting standards. And it came back as if you did, we're going to be submitting this report again this year and expect to receive that award again. Two pages after that is the Lauderbach and Amon opinion. It's on the letterhead. We gave the village an unmodified opinion again this year. It's the highest opinion that we give. Essentially, we're saying that the audit report is in compliance with all governmental accounting standards and the numbers in here are what they say they are. Two pages after that is the management discussion and analysis. This section is a summary in narrative format, everything else is within this audit report. The village has a very in-depth, detailed MDNA, one of the most detailed, I think, that we have for our clients. So I think it provides a lot of very good information for you that you can read instead of just seeing all the numbers. But since I'm going to be talking about some of these numbers, we're going to go ahead and flip past this section. It says, "MDNA 1" at the bottom. You can see that, "MDNA 2." Flip past, "MDNA 17," and we're going to get into the actual financial statements. You'll see on pages three and four, these are your government-wide financials. These are all your funds summed together. I'm actually going to go skip past these. I would really like to drill into the fund-level financials, if that would be okay with everybody. I think these don't really portray very well what's going on at the village anymore because of last year's Gatsby 68. So I don't really want to get into that unless you guys want me to. Go forward to pages seven and eight. So this is the fund-level financials, this is where you're used to seeing presented to you of what's going on here at the village. So at the bottom right-hand corner of page eight, you can see our total fund balance is $8.5 million. In terms of your main driving fund, your general fund of that, you have about $4.6 million. So what does that mean? How'd we do this year? Let's go forward to page 10 and 11. On page 10 and 11, you can see that, at the bottom right-hand corner, you can see that $8.5 million that I talked about. Two numbers up from there, you can see there was a total decrease of about $1 million for all the funds. This was a planned drawdown that the board had approved for the road improvements that happened this year within the capital project funds. And you can see that, you know, underneath the capital projects. Your main driving fund here is the general fund. That's what I'm going to focus on here. In total, you had a total decrease of this fund of $895,000. However, if you look right above that number, you had a total, you had a transfer out to the capital project fund that was budgeted for and planned by the board so you can fund additional capital projects that are occurring in 2017. So really, for the general fund, right above that, you can see there was a total increase of $173,000. Revenues came in basically right at budget and expenses were under budget and allowed you to have this increase for the year. In total, your fund balance for general fund is very healthy at 51% of your expenses. Any questions about the governmental funds? Going forward to page 13 and 14, we're talking about the water and sewer fund. These funds are back in that full accrual financial, which means we have the long-term assets on page 13, the capital assets and the long-term debt on page 14. So where I want to focus again is at the net position level. In total, you have $14.2 million of net position unrestricted in terms of taking out the capital assets, you have $4 million. So how'd we do? Let's go forward to page 15. On page 15, your water and sewer fund total, you had a total change of a decrease of $4,000. So if you took out the depreciation, the real, like the non-cash portion, you know, you were well over positive for this fund. So revenues came in over budget, expenses came in consistent. Your fund balances are very healthy for this fund when you compare the unrestricted to your expenses. 141%, I think is what the total is. So overall, your funds for the water fund is very healthy and in a good position. You're sustaining itself at this point and trying to keep up with the expenses that are getting passed on to you from Chicago. That is my presentation for the audit report. Do you have any questions about the numbers or anything within the thicker document?
Mr. Lumston looks like he's looking. Ms. Peters, any questions?
No, for me.
The management letter itself, I'll briefly touch upon. It was, came in very clean. You can see there's really, we had one new comment this year, and it's more of an informational comment. It has to do with the new Gatsby, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. It's coming out with a new one that's going to impact you two years from now. So it's more of a heads up that be ready that another thing is going to impact your report for the other post-employment benefits. Basically, what happened with the pension fund last year is going to happen with other post-employment benefits. So this document is going to get a lot fatter and a lot thicker, and certain parts of it are going to be harder to understand. So I guess that's, I guess that's part of, part of the job. So that'll take place in two years. It was a much better audit this year, I will say. Last year, we had some hiccups with the new, all the transitions that happened. It went very well this year. A year, Suzie had a much better year putting everything together and look forward to building off of this with Karen going forward.
Thank you. No, I was very happy with the way this went. I mentioned a little earlier, but it was a little loud, that this was our fifth year of our audit contract. So we will be putting out RFP in July and beginning of October this summer.
So with that, I would ask for a motion, a second, to accept the CAFER. Motion by Mr. Lumston.
Second.
Second on Mr. Pollack. Any further comments? Please call the roll.
Trustee Pollack.
Aye.
Trustee Jisa.
Aye.
Trustee Ballering.
Aye.
Trustee Lumston.
Aye.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
Motion carries. So thank you very much. This, this document, we look at this every year, and I joke about it being incomprehensible, but it isn't really. What it really is, is a testament to the hard work of our, of our departments, our heads, certainly our village manager and our finance director. I think you, maybe you heard repeated in there, revenue standard, expenses under. This, this is because of the hard work that our department has to do every single day, making sure that the residents of this village get the maximum amount of benefit for their hard-earned dollars. So we really appreciate the work that our staff does. Mr. Barron, thank you.
Thank you very much. I guess have a great evening.
Thanks, sir. Next up is public comment. Would anyone like to address the board this evening? Here are none. We'll move on to reports of village officers. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see your hand. I'm sorry.
Good evening. My name is Allison Probowski-Vulman, and my husband, Thomas, and I are residents at 116 Gage. I'd first like to thank the board members for their time and talent dedicated to our village. I'm here tonight to ask that the board leave the current picnic and fishing ordinances in place. I'm a lifelong resident of Riverside, as is my brother, Bill Probowski, who's a member of the Riverside Police Auxiliary. As children, we often fished on the banks of the Displanes River and Riverside Lawn. It's close, it's convenient, and it offers plenty of room for this activity. We found no hardship in using this area. I do not want to see groups gathered across the street from my home, picnicking in the commons or fishing on the riverbanks. I'd venture to say that the majority of these individuals would not be Riverside residents as residents would likely be enjoying their own yards. What I can foresee happening is something similar to what occurs each nice weather weekend in a nearby Sirmac Park on Ogden Avenue in Lyons. People, music, pets, food, liquor, coolers, and grills. I don't think we need to give Chief Weitzel and his police force any additional responsibilities lifting the ban will bring. I certainly can see the reasoning behind the fishing and picnic ordinances that are currently in place. As a resident who pays a substantial property tax, I don't want the picnic and fishing laws modified. I'd like to continue to enjoy the peaceful and clean commons and riverbanks of Riverside as they are currently. And I thank you for your consideration.
We are going to be talking about this later. So if you want to, I don't know if you want to stay or if you just want to watch it, watch it from the comfort. But just before you leave, though, just so, just to touch on one thing, the, the scenario that you described with lots of people and the grills and the drinking, none of that would be allowed under the proposal that we're discussing?
I would assume not, but there's often a lot of rules that need to be then enforced. So to me, when someone says "picnicking," that comes with certain expectations. Coolers, beer, music. And my level of music might not be someone else's level of comfortable music. So we can put as many restrictions on it, which I'm very confident you all would put in wonderful restrictions with the best of intentions in mind. It's just the enforcement of it at the beginning, and it continues, let's face it. It'll have to be continually enforced, I think would cause a lot of undue hardship. No one wants to have to call the police that people are loud across the street, having a great gathering. It's just not what you want to do. And we've enjoyed so many years of really good vibe around this all the way it is now. If people want to fish, they've been very comfortable fishing on the other sides. I'm not sure what changing this would benefit our residents. I guess that's what I'm saying. It might draw other people in to enjoy picnic and fishing, but that is, I don't see the benefit to the village, the residents.
That question will be answered when you watch from home.
Yeah, I have a feeling. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Moving on, first up is the village president's report. Tonight, I have something that the village has been working on kind of behind the scenes for a while. And once, once I go through this proclamation, I'm going to ask our Director of Parks and Recreation to step up and, and brief the residents on some of the initiatives that we've got underway. What this is, is Riverside joining a larger movement with regard to the protection and hopefully the replenishing the monarch and pollinator population in, in our ecosystem. So I'll read this. This is a proclamation for Monarch Pledge Day. Whereas the monarch butterfly is the official state insect of Illinois and is an iconic American species whose multi-generational migration and metamorphosis from caterpillar to butterfly has captured the imagination of millions of Americans. And whereas there has been a rapid decline of the monarch due to the loss of milkweed habitat needed to lay their eggs and for their caterpillars to eat, resulting from development, land management practices, and chemically aided agriculture. And whereas 20 years ago, more than 1 billion, billion eastern monarch butterflies migrated to Mexico, but in the winter of 2015, only 56.5 million made the trip. Whereas conservation organizations such as the National Wildlife Federation and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service have undertaken efforts to reinvigorate native milkweed to help restore monarch habitat in open spaces and suburban and urban gardens. And whereas Riverside can make a difference for the monarch by planting native milkweed and nectar plants to provide habitat for the monarch and other pollinators. And whereas the village of Riverside, the Riverside Parks and Recreation Department, Riverside Public Library, and Riverside School District 96 are all incorporating monarch-friendly plants, especially milkweed, within our village landscape. And whereas on behalf of the people of Riverside, the village board of trustees is honored to sign the National Wildlife Federation's Monarch Pledge, and we encourage other local government officials to take action so the monarch butterfly will once again flourish. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the members of the village board of trustees, hereby proclaim this day as Monarch Pledge Day in the village of Riverside, dated this 15th of June 2017. So with that, Mr. Malkiotti, if you'd like to brief us.
Thank you, Village President Sells, village board, village manager Francis. It's not very often that I get to talk to the board about the birds and the bees. So I'm going to take that opportunity tonight. Of course, we're talking about monarchs and pollinators and the initiative in Riverside. So in addition to the proclamation that Village President Sells had read, I'm just going to kind of detail what's kind of going on in the village, what we're doing in the department, and future plans. Just to touch on some of the things that were read, monarch butterflies are one of the most identifiable insects, which is why people started noticing when the population began plummeting. The butterfly population has declined dramatically in the past two decades. The total area covered by monarch colonies that migrate to Mexico during the winter has dropped from about 45 acres in 1997 to 3.2 acres, according to the Monarch Joint Venture, which is made up of federal and state agencies. But monarch butterflies are not the only ones that need our support. Nationally, bees, butterflies, and birds, other pollinators, are all threatened by habitat loss, parasites, and pesticides. Recommended plantings are milkweed, aster, goldenrod, sylvia, or any pollinator blend. A couple of bonus must-haves are zinnias and sunflowers since they're so cheap, easy to grow, and attract so many types of pollinators. What's being done in our community? Well, if you've been to the side of the public library, you've seen they have a butterfly garden that was planted by an Eagle Scout and recognized with signage by Brookfield Zoo. Public School District 96 has planted a native garden at Blythe Park School after receiving a grant, and they're currently having discussions about creating monarch waste stations in the future. We've also been in touch with Brookfield Zoo, and they've pledged to work with us to develop future gardens in the village. As far as the village of Riverside, Parks and Recreation Department held a milkweed planting day at the historic water tower with children in our Kinder Kids program. Those are some of the pictures there. It was part of our unit on butterflies and pollinators. Our summer camp always stresses nature and the natural resources that surround us, but this year, we will add a day dedicated to pollinators and planting milkweed in the scout cabin area. In addition, our Public Works Department has also created a pollinator garden at the Department of Public Works building. There are some more pictures of our kids planting milkweed and other pollinator blends right outside the water tower. Well, what can we do? Well, anyone can plant a butterfly pollinator garden. You can purchase seed kits online and get plenty of information. WorldWildlife.org has a lot of good general information and statistics. WildCenter.org has tips on creating... Zoo. Public School District 96 has planted a native garden at Blythe Park School after receiving a grant, and they're currently having discussions about creating monarch waste stations in the future. We've also been in touch with Brookfield Zoo, and they've pledged to work with us to develop future gardens in the village. As far as the village of Riverside, the Parks and Recreation Department held a milkweed planting day at the historic water tower with children in our kinderkids program. Those are some of the pictures there. It was part of our unit on butterflies and pollinators. Our summer camp always stresses nature and the natural resources that surround us, but this year, we will add a day dedicated to pollinators and planting milkweed in the scout cabin area. In addition, our public works department has also created a pollinator garden at the Department of Public Works building. There are some more pictures of our kids planting milkweed and other pollinator blends right outside the water tower. Well, what can we do? Well, anyone can plant a butterfly pollinator garden. You can purchase seed kits online and get plenty of information. WorldWildlife.org has a lot of good general information and statistics. WildCenter.org has tips on creating your own pollinator garden, and of course, DNRIllinois.gov will give you more information on the Illinois Monarch Butterfly Initiative. Thank you.
After that, as most folks probably know, we're going to be initiating a very substantial replanting in Swan Pond, create a natural wetland area down there. And as part of that plan, we're going to be incorporating plants that will attract and fulfill the needs of the pollinators and the monarchs, so that's going to be an additional initiative of the village. So, buy milkweed, plant milkweed, and take care of our pollinators. That's the message. So that's all I have. Manager Francis.
I just wanted to notify residents that construction obviously is underway. We are doing our resurfacing project, and that's occurring on Northwood-Evelyn, Yewdale and Yewdale Court. And over the next few weeks, you'll notice that resurfacing efforts, sidewalk squares are being removed and replaced, and also curb and gutters, so we just stress your patience during that time. Also, MWRD works continues, and also the sewer separation project within the First Division. You can go to our village website. We'll send out an eflash tomorrow with a capital story map, so that residents can see where we're replacing sidewalk squares, where we're installing and doing reforestation of trees, and also just where there is different capital improvements throughout the community, so that you're aware. That is all I have.
Thank you very much. Any questions? I encourage you to go online and take a look at that, because I don't have to tell you how much construction is going on around town, so this will give you some alternate routes perhaps. Next up is the approval of the consent agenda, so I need to read through these. Ratification of bills, June 1, 2017. Approval of voucher list of bills, June 15, 2017. Approval of village board trustees' regular meeting minutes, May 18, 2017. And filing review the following. Planning and zoning commission regular meeting minutes for April 26, 2017. Community development department monthly report, May 2017. Finance department monthly report, May 2017. Fire department monthly report, May 2017. And police department monthly report, May 2017. A motion to approve the special event application for the 2017 Independence Day festivities in Riverside, including the concert in the park on July 3, and the Independence Day 5K run, parrot parade, and post-parade gathering in Guthrie Park on July 4. An ordinance to ascertain the prevailing rate of wages for laborers, mechanics, and other workers employed in public works projects for the village of Riverside. A motion to waive competitive bidding and approve a resolution authorizing the village manager to enter into an agreement with FSFH Passion in the amount of $21,272.47 to modify an existing emergency shower eyewash station through job order contracting. And a motion to approve an intergovernmental agreement between Riverside School District 96 and the village of Riverside to provide a school-age childcare program. I'd ask for a motion and a second to approve. Motion by Mr. Ballerain. Second by Mr. Jisa. Questions? Please call the roll.
Trustee Pollack.
Aye.
Trustee Jisa.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerain.
Aye.
Trustee Lumsden.
Aye.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to reports of departments, commissions, and trustee liaisons, I believe that trustee Ballerain, you wanted to draw some attention to a very significant development in our village.
I would like, and once again, I'd like to ask Ronda to come up to the podium. Couple of things I would ask you to talk about are 2017 third and fourth celebrations, if you wouldn't mind, and secondly, about the District 96 agreement we have with them to provide at school. I think that's wonderful for our department and great job for you and your staff getting that done. I know it's been a long road.
Thank you. Third and Fourth of July, I'll run down the itinerary for that. Monday, July 3, is our concert in the park at Guthrie Park. The park will open at 5:00 p.m. Music will begin at 5:45 p.m. with Tony Ocean, who was at last year's Ravinia, very popular. He will be opening the concert in the park, and then we'll have Brat Pack later on that evening. Of course, we'll have local vendors on hand to purchase food and beverages. Tuesday, July 4, quite a busy day. Starts at 7:30 in the morning with our Independence Day 5K. We do have race day registration. I would encourage you not to wait till the last minute, but for those of you on the fence, we do have race day registration available till 7:15. The Independence Day parade will start at 8:45. If you are in the parade, lineup begins at 8:15 up at Big Ballpark. After that, we have the festival in Guthrie Park at 10:00 a.m., and that will feature the music of Zydeko Voodoo and the Chicago Bears drumline, in addition to our classic car show. And then at 11:00 a.m. is the ever-popular toddler trot, which is next to the train station. And there's nothing better after a long two days of activity than seeing little ones meander around a racecourse that we have. And of course, I'd like to take the opportunity as well to thank the Friends of the Fourth and all the residents that have donated to Friends of the Fourth. Really helps us provide the highest quality two days that we can, so we thank them for their efforts and we thank residents for their donations. The District 96, as you know, has been an ongoing goal of this department, to develop partnership with District 96 and offer high-quality programs through the school. This actually came about in steps. We've worked closely with superintendent Martha Ryan-Toy and the principals at each school, and for the first time ever this year, we offered specialized programming at Ames School and Central School, including STEM programs, art programs, and athletic programs. Based on the success of those programs, we will be expanding specialized programming not only this summer at summer school, but at every District 96 school. And those are specialized programs that just occur after school, different from the before-and-after-school program. We also proposed a before-and-after-school program, and the district granted us a pilot program at Central School for the 2017-18 school year. We believe this will be an opportunity to showcase to the district and parents of the district the type of quality program we can offer, and it'll also strengthen an already successful partnership between two local agencies dedicated to serving to the children of community. I'd also like to thank the District 96 School Board, the support of our village board and village manager Francis, and superintendent Martha Ryan-Toy for this opportunity. I think it'll be great for both organizations, but most importantly, the children of the community. One other note that you didn't mention, but since I'm up here, I'd also like to recognize the first annual fishing derby that we held last weekend. That was an idea that was approached from the village president Sells. How can we incorporate? We are called Riverside. We have this natural resource at our fingertips. What can we do to showcase that? And we had come up with the idea, after much work, of fishing derby, and I'm proud to say it was a big success, even with sweltering temperatures. We had most people show up. Everyone caught fish. All the kids enjoyed themselves, learned a little bit about fishing, learned a little about the river, species of fish in the river, but most importantly, just explored a different part of Riverside. So I'd like to thank everyone who attended and also thank president Sells for all his work on the project. Thank you.
Really? So, the school-age childcare program, so when will parents will have to sign their children up for that?
They will. The first night of registration will be June 27, and we're actually going to offer extended hours at the Parks and Rec Department. Will be open from 8:00 in the morning till 7:00 at night for any working parents, so they can come and not only register, but it is a new program at the schools, so we welcome any questions. It will not be drastically different, other than the type of program and the quality that we're offering, you know, that they're accustomed to now.
Do they need to register in person, or can they register online?
They need to. We have paperwork, medical forms, permission slips that need to be dropped off in person, but after that, they'll be able to pay online, so it'll just be that initial registration.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's an exciting.
It is. Very, very exciting.
I know you've been working on it, you and the department, for a long time.
Yes, thank you.
Any other trustee reports? Hearing none, we'll move on to ordinances and resolutions. First up is an ordinance amending various sections of the village of Riverside zoning ordinance relative to animal shelters. Director Apt.
I received an application for a text amendment from Harlem Jam LLC, which is the property owner of 3242 South Harlem, relative to amending our zoning ordinance to allow animal shelters as a special use in our B1C commercial district. The text amendment includes amendments to our definitions, to add a definition, to the use in bulk requirement table, to add that use, as well as to the use standards, to add specific standards relative to animal shelters. Petitioner is requesting the text amendment in order to lease a vacant commercial space to an animal rescue organization, the Greater Chicago Ferret Association. Planning and zoning commission conducted their public hearing on May 24 and recommended approval. The text amendment was also reviewed by our preservation commission on June 8. They review all proposed text amendments to determine whether or not there would be any adverse impact on our national landmark designation or the general plan of Riverside, which they found that this would not. Currently, our zoning ordinance does not allow animal shelters in any of our business districts, so a text amendment was required in order to allow this use to come in. The proposed text amendment is drafted by staff, creates the definition of an animal shelter, and it's based on the state statute definition. It adds it as a special use in the B1C district only, so it would not be allowed in our downtown B2 districts, and it would not be allowed in the transitional commercial B1 district. So it'd only be in the B1C district, which is primarily on Harlem Avenue. So it provides standards for the use, which would require them to meet our noise standards in the village code, that would require them to have state licensing, and the standards also do not permit any sort of outdoor facilities associated with an animal shelter. The planning and zoning commission were comfortable with the proposed use standards and the text amendment. However, they did bring up that our municipal code currently prohibits kennels within 100 feet of a residence. The village attorney noted that in our animals section of the municipal code, it states that boarding is in return for remuneration, and therefore technically wouldn't apply to animal shelters. However, just to make sure that it's clear, we could include some changes to that section. So incorporated into the ordinance that you would be adopting tonight would be amending that section of the municipal code to specifically say, or explicitly say, that animal shelters are not included in the definition of boarding or kennels. So, as I said, the planning and zoning commission did recommend approval of the text amendment. You have the ordinance before you. This does need to be adopted before we can approve the special use, which is next on the agenda. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. Representatives and property owners here as well, if you have any questions.
Before we get to the questions and discussion, I'd ask for a motion to approve an ordinance amending various sections of the village of Riverside zoning ordinance relative to animal shelters. Motion by Mr. Pollack. Second by Mr. Jisa. Comments? Questions for the petitioner, Ms. Apt? Hearing none? Call the roll.
Trustee Pollack.
Aye.
Trustee Jisa.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerain.
Aye.
Trustee Lumsden.
Aye.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on, next is an ordinance approving a special use for a ferret rescue shelter, animal shelter at 3242 South Harlem Avenue, Riverside. The Greater Chicago Ferret Association is apt.
Yes, so in addition to the text amendment application, the village received an application from the Greater Chicago Ferret Association requesting a special use to allow a rescue shelter for ferrets in our B1 commercial zoning district at the property located at 3242 South Harlem, in conjunction with, I said, the text amendment that you just adopted. So the planning and zoning commission conducted their combined public hearing on both the text amendment and the special use back on May 24. They discussed the proposed shelter that's going in. The proposed text amendment, like I said, they would be required to, now that it is considered a special use, to require any of the use standards that we have in there. They are state licensed, and they would not be allowed to have any outdoor facilities per our requirements. They've stated that they place ferrets for rescue, ferrets for adoption. They take in rescues. They also do educational and outreach activities. They are volunteer-run, so they have volunteers that come in during the week to take care of the ferrets, and they only take appointments for the adopting of the ferrets or for surrendering of the ferrets. So it's not open to the general public. You do have to make appointments in order to be able to go in. The existing commercial building that they are proposing to locate in does not have any off-street parking, however, there is on-street parking available on Harlem Avenue. The commercial building owner did state at the public hearing that they do have overflow parking, that the bank allows them, so there is access to parking with the bank as well to the south of them. The ferret association's representatives stated their facility is very clean, does not cause any sort of nuisance, they've never had any complaints from their existing neighbor and their facility in Lyons. As I said before, they are by appointment only. They try to keep a very low profile, or don't want anybody to just randomly leave ferrets at the door, anything like that. They state that on average, they have about 75 rescues at their facility, but the capacity can vary throughout the year, can range from 50 to 115 ferrets. They see surges during the year, especially during times of year when kids are going off to school, et cetera. There was some concern by some commissioners about waste disposal, and they said currently, they don't have any restrictions on their waste disposal. They use pellets in the ferret cages, and it just goes out in the regular trash. I did verify with Flood Brothers, who is our waste disposal company, and they said that they would have no specific restrictions on ferret pet waste, and that they would be able to just go into the regular trash, so there is no issue with that. As I stated before, the planning and zoning commission did recommend approval of both the text amendment and the special use. The special use did come with some conditions, one that the special use is for an animal shelter, limited to the operation of a ferret rescue shelter, so this can't morph into a shelter for other animals without them coming back to you for approval for that. They must obtain a building permit, occupancy permit, and they must provide us with a copy of their state license, and the ferret rescue shelter must comply with all of our Riverside codes, so any of our nuisance noise ordinances, et cetera. So you have an ordinance adopting that special use before you. We have Ethel here from the Greater Chicago Ferret Association can answer any questions you have. I'm also available.
So with that, I'd ask for a motion to approve, an ordinance approving a special use for a ferret rescue shelter, animal shelter at 3242 South Harlem Avenue, Riverside, the Greater Chicago Ferret Association. Motion by Mr. Ballerain. Second by Mr. Pollack. Questions?
I went and visited your ferret group a couple of weeks, a week ago. I was actually very surprised. You had a lot of ferrets in there, and it didn't have an odor, it didn't smell. I mean, if you put 100 of us in that room, it probably would have smelled worse. It was done very nicely. It's nice volunteers there. They were working. Place was magnificently clean. I did some business with the guy next door, and there was no smell or anything, so welcome to Riverside.
So let the record reflect that Mr. Ballerain went to a ferret rescue shelter and was surprised to find ferrets.
I was surprised to find that many ferrets.
Any other questions or comments? Please call the roll.
Trustee Pollack.
Aye.
Trustee Jisa.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerain.
Aye.
Trustee Lumsden.
Aye.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you for what you do, and welcome to Riverside.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Moving on, next up is an ordinance amending various sections of the village of Riverside zoning ordinance relative to lot divisions, drive-through facilities, parking, accessory structures, and to make other miscellaneous changes. And just as a little background on this, one of the things that this board does on an ongoing basis is we're constantly combing through our village code, trying to make it more streamlined, trying to make it more simple, trying to make it more understandable, easier for residents to access, and to try to remove redundancies and contradictions. So this is kind of one phase of that. So with that, Director Apt.
Yes. Hang in there. Dull work, but we'll get through it. So, I've been working with the village attorney and have identified some areas of the zoning ordinance that have some inconsistencies with other ordinances and needs to be clarified. Additionally, as zoning cases have come before the village, staff has identified areas where the zoning ordinance could be clearer, and therefore, we're recommending some changes. The planning and zoning commission conducted a public hearing on the proposed text amendments on April 26 and did recommend approval with some changes, and the preservation commission also reviewed the proposed text amendments per their ordinance and determined that these proposed amendments would not have any negative impact on our national landmark designation or the general plan of Riverside. So, getting into the meat of it, the proposed text amendments are intended to clarify various areas of the code where there are inconsistencies or lack of references, and some of these areas are including the building permit section. Our building code states that permits are required when the cost of construction or repair is $500. repair is five hundred dollars, more, more than five hundred dollars. However, in the zoning ordinance, the section referencing building permits says that it starts at one hundred dollars. Typically, historically, we've gone with the five hundred dollar rule, not the one hundred dollar rule, so in order to make everything consistent, we are revising that section to reference the building code. So going by the five hundred dollar rule, and then going forward, whenever it's revised, it gets revised in one place, and that, that section reference stays there. So hopefully, we don't have future inconsistencies as we move forward. Next section would be for our accessory structures, so this is in our site development standard section. The accessory structures subsection regulates accessory structures such as garages and playhouses and sheds. The list of structures that it lists does not match the list of structures that's in our permitted encroachments table, so we're proposing to revise the list so that they both match, which means that they would both include gazebos. So that's the big change there. We're also proposing to clarify or add a reference to where our landmark homes are. There is a reference in there to any of our landmark coach houses, and so we're adding in the reference to where in the code they can find that there. And additionally, we're recommending some changes to definitions related to accessory structures. So we're proposing to amend the accessory structure definition to remove the reference to detached structures, since some of our accessory structures that we do list in that section are, in fact, actually attached to the building, including things like porches. So staff is proposing to make that small amendment to the definition, as well as add a definition for structures, since we define accessory structures, detached structures, and attached structures, so should have a definition for structure in there as well. So we have a proposed definition for that, which would be an improvement upon land other than the land itself, the use of which requires more or less permanent location on the ground or attached to something having a permanent location on the ground, including but not limited to buildings, fences, freestanding signs, patios, and parking areas. We're also proposing some clarifications, corrections in our parking regulations in the B one district. So currently, in the B two district and in the B one C district, for non-residential uses, there's just kind of a blanket statement, non-residential uses, under three thousand square feet, no parking required, or up to three thousand square feet, nothing required. Over three thousand square feet, then there's a parking requirement. Then you get to the B one TC district, and it has that statement in there, and then it goes on to list a bunch of non-residential uses. So it's a little bit inconsistent, don't know necessarily which one you're supposed to follow, so the cleanup would be to get rid of that list of individual uses and just stick with the non-residential parking restriction. So that's the proposed change for that, that makes it consistent for all of our business districts then. Three hu- three thousand square feet and under, no parking required. Over three thousand square feet, one per four hundred square feet over that three thousand mark. So that'd be the new parking requirement. Next up, we have some more trickier stuff. We get into the general applicability section of the zoning ordinance, and here we have a general prohibition section. So we believe that this section requires some clarification to make it clear that a property owner cannot create non-conformities by making changes to their property or the structures on their property. So staff believes that this should be revised to explicitly prohibit any activity that would cause any existing structure to not comply with the zoning ordinance, or that would create any parcel of land that could not be developed in compliance with the zoning ordinance. We're also looking to further clarify that the division of land cannot create non-conformities for existing structures, not just the proposed parcels of land. So staff is recommending that division of lots be included in this prohibition section to ensure that if lots are divided, they cannot create any non-conformities, either with the lots or the existing structures. And additionally, staff is proposing adding language about dividing zoning lots as a specific session, section to clarify that any division of land must meet all of the bulk requirements. So there would be a new subsection F for division of lots that states that they would not be able to create any sort of non-conformities, and that they need to follow the subdivision ordinance. Then we get to lots of record held in common ownership. So staff has also found that due to our new subdivision regulations, there are few areas in the zoning ordinance that need to be addressed or clarified, and these included adding the language about the division of lots in the general applicability section, and also clarifying the division of lots of record held in common ownership. So in our non-conformities chapter of the zoning ordinance, there is a section on non-conforming lots of record, and this section regulates existing lots of record that do not meet the lot area or lot with requirements of our zone, of the zoning district they're located in. And it states that where there are two or more lots of record with continuous frontage and single ownership, and one or more of the lots having contiguous frontage that does not meet the requirements for the lot with or lot area as established by the zoning ordinance, the land so involved shall be considered to be a single unsubdivided parcel for the purposes of the zoning ordinance. No portion of said parcel shall be used, transferred, or conveyed, which does not meet the lot with and lot area requirements established by the zoning ordinance, and no division of the parcel shall be made which leaves the remaining lot with lot with or lot area below the requirements of the zoning ordinance, and that no building permit shall be issued for the use of any lot or portion of a transferred lot that's conveyed in violation of the section. So staff is proposing to include that revised language from our general prohibition section, where we talked about not creating any non-conformities on the lot, to this section. So this would mean that, or it would clarify that not only can you not sell an existing lot of record and leave a remaining lot that does not meet the lot with or lot area requirements, but you also cannot create a non-conformity on the remaining lot or existing structure on the remaining lot. So you can't sell off a piece of property, and then that means that the house that's on the remaining lot doesn't meet the setbacks, or doesn't meet the building coverage restrictions. So we're proposing those changes, clarifications in there, and then also, we're looking at dealing with the definition for zoning lots and lots. So staff also believes that clarification and changes are needed regarding zoning lots. So the current definition of a zoning lot is a single tract of land located within a single block, which at the time of filing for a building permit or site plan review, is designated by its owner or developer as a tract to be used, developed, or built upon as a unit under single ownership or control. Therefore, a zoning lot may not, may or may not coincide with a lot of record, which we were just talking about. So this definition puts the definition of a zoning lot in the hands of the owner or developer, rather than the actual use of the property or the zoning ordinance establishing when it becomes a zoning lot. So staff is proposing to change the definition for zoning lot to a single tract of land in common ownership located within a single block, so that part's staying the same, which is used or occupied for any principal use, whether permitted special or non-conforming. A zoning lot may or may not coincide with a lot of record, and may consist of a single lot of record, portion of a lot of record, a combination of complete lots of record, or of complete lots of record, and portions of lots of record, or portions and portions of lots of record, and a piece of property described by meets and bounds, so the whole gamut. Then we're also proposing to add a definition for lot, because why not? If we're gonna define other kinds of lots, we may as well just define a lot similar to what we did with structure. So that definition would be a parcel or tract of land. So that's all of our clarification, kind of correction stuff. Then some more kind of, I don't know, use changes, is that we're proposing a text amendment related to drive-throughs. So currently, we only have standards for banks with drive-throughs, but we don't have any standards for restaurants or retail establishments with drive-throughs. So staff is proposing to amend the use standards that are for banks with drive-throughs to apply to all drive-throughs, so that we have something for those uses. Now, drive-throughs are either special uses or just not permitted in any of our business districts, so depending on where you're at, so restaurants with drive-throughs, retail establishments with drive-throughs are not permitted in our downtown, but they are permitted in our B one, as special issues, special uses, I should say, in our B one district. So the amendment will still require banks in the B two district to have their drive-throughs located behind the building, however, that same standard would not apply to restaurants and retail establishments outside of the B two district. Staff is proposing to keep the same stacking requirements, which is three spaces per drive-through window or facility, and we're also proposing to add screening and noise and lighting requirements for drive-through facilities to minimize their impact on adjacent residences. So like you have the menu boxes and things out there that can be noisy, you got the drive-throughs coming through, the lights can be shining into residences' windows, and so these screening requirements will help minimize that impact on there. And again, they're special uses, so these are things that would still be reviewed as part of the special use review process, but it just kind of lays out that level of expectation for people as they're perhaps planning on building those kinds of things. So...
Before you answer the question about that? So I see in here you mentioned some of the restaurants, you say that Dunkin' Donuts typically requires six stacking, Starbucks requires a minimum of ten. Why are we staying, if, if this is intended to relate to restaurants, why are we keeping it at three?
Well, because I don't necessarily know that we need to be overly restrictive. It really kind of depends on the type of use that it is and what that business's standard is. So as a minimum, three spaces, I think, can work. If a business wants more, they'll ask for more, but this is a minimum that they have to provide.
So in the special use process, they could say, we need six, we need eight, that would be part of the determination.
Right. But if somebody wanted to come in and say, three is too many, then they'd have to get a variance for that.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
So those are all of the proposed changes that we have. You have an ordinance that adopts all of those changes, includes some of the changes that the Plan and Zoning Commission had recommended, and the Plan and Zoning Commission did recommend approval with those revisions, they've been incorporated. Preservation Commission didn't really have any changes, they were fine with the proposed amendments and didn't feel that they would have any sort of negative impact on our landmark designation. Happy to answer any other questions that you have.
So with that, I'd ask for, for a motion approving an ordinance amending various sections of the Village of Riverside zoning ordinance relative to lot divisions, drive-through facilities, parking, accessory structures, and other miscellaneous changes.
I would like that motion.
Motion by Mr. Pollak.
Second.
Second by Mr. Giesel. Any questions for Director Apt? Mr. Pollak.
I just have questions on one, one aspect of that, it's the very first one on building permits.
Mm-hmm.
The first question is, why don't we just remove that from the zoning ordinance entirely? I've never seen a threshold for building permits referenced in the zoning code.
Right, so we don't, it's been removed, and it just references, you know, building permits will be required per the building code and goes to that section.
Okay, I'm sorry, I read it wrong then. So my, my second comment doesn't relate then to these particular amendments, but a question for the village board and staff. I know some time ago, myself and another trustee had talked about what we perceived as the need to really look hard at that building permit threshold of five hundred dollars, and to really look and see if that's the appropriate standard. My own opinion of that is, it's not an appropriate standard, that by simply saying that any repair work that costs five hundred dollars or more requires a permit, we're turning most of our residents into violators, I suspect.
I agree. You and I happen to be, I think, challenged a little bit.
Right.
Five hundred dollars, it's a feature of our, our general need, why not? I still think, I would like to have him take a good look at that, especially when it's like it's in repairs, because I think that's gonna drive people to do it illegally, or not do it, and then we have continual decay. So I agree with you on that, but I still would like those guys to revise that and figure out what the right number is.
Yeah, I mean, my, I think the right answer is not a number, it's more of a list of, this is what requires a permit and what doesn't, because the number can be rather arbitrary. If I'm doing it myself, maybe it's one number, if I'm hiring somebody, it's another number. So, you know, my neighbors who's hiring someone has to get a permit, I don't, because my, my cost is only four hundred and fifty dollars, because I'm doing it myself. Well, that's, what's the public in, interest in that? There is none. So it's really about what work is being performed, not the cost of it. So I would like, if the rest of the board is in agreement, I would like to, to suggest we direct our staff to look into that and, and bring that back to us in the near future.
In, in doing this work, did you happen to look at how other municipalities handled it?
Well, when we were adjusting the building permit fees, we were looking at other communities, and it seems to be a mix. Some will pick a number, and some will just have a list of all the different things that require permits and what the associated fees are with those. So I don't think it's necessarily consistent, a lot of communities just go about it different ways.
Is everybody okay with our staff taking a look at this? I mean, it does, I mean, it is an arbitrary number, a question, and this day and age, it is a low number. So, so why, let's, you're okay with leaving this as it is?
Yes.
And asking it as it is, and then having them take a separate look?
Concerned with that.
Anything else? Please call the roll.
Trustee Powell.
Aye.
Trustee Giesel.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Trustee Lumsden.
Aye.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
Motion carries. And, you know, Chief Weitzel was here earlier tonight talking about deputy chief and lieutenant about how they're crossing Ts and dotting Is, that's what this is. And I know how tedious it is, and how hard it is, but it's extremely important, and it's really, it was really well done. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up is an ordinance authorizing renewal of aggregation program for electrical load. Ms. Francis.
So as the board recalls, in 2012, there was a referendum regarding the establishment of a municipal aggregation program. It did pass, and so the village began working with Northern Illinois Municipal Electric Collaborative, also known as NYMEC. We have since gone through various vendors to provide electric, or to electric supply services to the village. As you recall, the infrastructure is provided by ComEd, however, you can actually purchase the electric supply from a different vendor, and we've utilized both, well, there's a number of various companies, we've utilized Direct Energy, First Energy, and currently we utilize Dynagee. As part of the directive of the board previously, for our previous contract with Dynagee, we wanted green energy, and so we did pay a slight premium in the packet that's included. It shows, since our last contract, our rate that we paid Dynagee versus that of the ComEd rate. Our current contract concludes August of 2017. There were revised proposals, renewed numbers, that were received today. We essentially have twenty-four hours to engage into an agreement with a selected vendor, or the board could elect to essentially dissolve the aggregation program, and that would revert residents back to ComEd for their electric supply. We have a representative from NYMEC, her name is Sharon Derling, that is here, that can ask, answer any questions that you may have with regard to the bid that we received today, and the board can provide direction as to whether or not to approve the ordinance, or then direct staff to then revert back to ComEd.
So with that, I'd ask for a motion to approve an ordinance authorizing renewal of aggregation program for electrical load.
So move.
By Mr. Pollak.
Second.
Second by Mr. Giesel. Any questions, Mr. Derling is here? I think, oh, we've kind of been through this before, you, do you, oh, she has to do it?
She has to notify you of who the lowest bid is.
Okay. Welcome back.
As you see, the president sells questions, and manager Frances, so I'm here to respond to any questions, but as you see, the, the rates are pretty flat to the ComEd rate, so as manager Frances says, several options. One, suspend the program, and that would happen in August, it'd be a pretty smooth process, and residents would receive one notice from ComEd. We could send you a template of the notice so that you know what to expect, and write some copy for your newsletter, so it could be pretty smooth moving back. That's an option. Another option is to renew the program. There's one number here on the sheet that you have that's slightly below the ComEd rate for the next year or so, and that's a fourteen-month term offered by Dynagee Energy with what I'll call traditional energy, and that's just thirteen percent renewable energy credit, the minimum Illinois RPS. So there's that, and I'll just throw out a third option of your choices you have before you, and that is where you want to continue your interest in the renewable energy credits. And I'll tell you that program to date, well, through the August termination, the village will have reduced carbon production by sixty-nine thousand one fifty, and that's through the offset of energy credits to renewable energy generators. So that's great, and that's a nice, you know, result of your program to date. So one option, where you want to continue to, as Jessica said, pay a slight premium for renewable energy credits, there's an option of contracting for a hundred percent renewable energy with Dynagee Energy, and the lowest rate is for fourteen months, the rate is seven point two five six, and that's about one and a half tenth of a cent above the base ComEd rate that offers just traditional. That's an option, yes?
What does that mean for the actual owner per month?
Per month, it's gonna be one tenth of, I should have my iPhone, sorry, Trustee Ballerine, I should know this, but I have one name on my hat, so it's just, you have me feeling that it's just a man, major, my phone is, but let's say, a thousand would be a lot a month, maybe that's a dollar, dollar fifty, but let me just, I don't want to say that. Maybe that's a dollar, dollar fifty, but let me just, I don't want to say the wrong thing. Dollar to dollar fifty for a high-usage home, so homes that might be 75 cents. One thing that we recently did, another community really wanted the 100% renewable. So we instituted this new plan that they set up the aggregation program for 100% renewable, and folks could still remain in the program but opt down to the brown or traditional energy. So if you wanted to still get the majority folks to join the community towards continuing in green, and it's a little above the ComEd rate, and that's what you're getting, a little more renewable energy credits, that step-down program, folks that say, well, I don't like that, they can pay a little bit less and get the traditional or brown energy that's just 13% renewable energy. So I'm happy to respond to any questions about those options before you.
There's plenty of options for the resident to, they don't want to be part of this program. They can easily, it's very simple. All they do is just send back the letter and say, I opt out.
Exactly. That's correct.
And ComEd has some, actually, I mean, there are some programs that ComEd has, the peak demand and stuff like that, that are very good programs if you're able to work with them.
They are. Hourly rate programs are really good. Yes. One thing that we've heard residents say, particularly seniors, is, I get all these calls, I get these letters, have a little confidence saying, well, I'm with the village's program. But they can also remain at ComEd. You're right, the options are good, and people are becoming more educated about doing, and about 20, 30% of the folks who like to figure out the rates, they've left the program in probably year one or year two when you started this, and they're managing their own thing, and that's great, and we encourage that. It's all about choice, bottom line.
So just so I understood you correctly, for the 14-month option at the 7.064 rate, if we want to go to all green, it's a rate of 7.256, and that would cause a household somewhere between 75 cents and a dollar fifty per household per month?
That's correct, Trustee Lumsden.
And, and that rate, that would lock into one of those two rates for 14 months verse the top line, which says from August of 2017 to May of 2018, ComEd is guaranteed 7.1 cents, right? But that's only for six months, and then it could grow or drop or whatever, right? Just want to be clear.
And if it does drop significantly, we can always leave the program with no fees?
Individuals can leave the program anytime they'd like to. There's never an early termination fee for a community program. That's important. And you've always had that.
Just for our residents at home, if they happen to be looking at this, you say 100% renewable energy for Dynage, but then you say power sources, coal, nuclear, natural gas. Why, what's, where's the, explain how that works.
How does that work? Yes, good. Dynage Energy is a producer. They're located in downstate Illinois, and that's their, their power sources. For the Village of Riverside, if you say, we, and you have, you're with them currently, we want 100% renewable energy credits, that means if they don't have enough wind farms on their own, as you can see, their production other is 4%. That probably includes some renewables. If they don't have enough to support your usage, they will buy it in the open market. It's a tradable entity. And in fact, we haven't offered this in the past, but when your program wraps up this year, you know, we can present with you with a breakdown of, because, you know, it is audited by Greeny, national entities, so we could, you know, exactly what you got, where it was, what state it was produced in, that sort of thing. So to answer your question, they may have to buy in the market if they're not producing enough on their own to support what you demand.
So if they buy it on the open market, are they buying renewable energy?
They're buying the certificates, yes. So when you create some electrons with a wind farm, you sell the actual electrons, and with that production, a certificate that is audited and tracked, and there's a number on that, it can only be used one time, and that certificate can be sort of sold separately from the electron, sort of bifurcated, so, or hydro power, or, you know, methane gas, or solar power. So that certificate, someone else can buy that credit. So you're essentially subsidizing or paying a premium to support the renewable energy market, without which maybe that wind farm wouldn't be able to operate or couldn't be competitive.
I guess what I'm asking, though, is the energy that's actually coming to Riverside, that would be, that could be generated by coal. That could be generated by...
It may be 100% coal, because once an electron enters the stream that serves all of Northern Illinois, they're identical, and we don't know which source it came from. It could be, the electrons are identical once they hit the network. So we don't know where anything comes from, once it's in that big pond, like you put a drop of water in the pond.
Then, then what is the, from an environmentalist standpoint, what's the, what's the benefit for the 100% renewable?
Benefit, some may argue, well, that's not really a benefit, because maybe it's, we can't say where it came from. It's all in this mass networking system. Supporting renewable energy, so you may find the benefit is we're enabling somewhere, maybe middle of Illinois or somewhere in Wisconsin, more green ener, green generation, because we're not using, we're not supporting the coal generation.
Is it fair to say that 100% of the fees paid by a resident, if we go non-renewal, go to the benefit of the producer, ultimately go to the benefit of the producer of the non-renewable energy?
Yes. I think that's fair to say.
Even though the actual energy we're using may not be from there, we don't know.
And that's just, that's the point. That's what I want to make sure our residents understand, is that we're supporting the producers of renewable.
Basically, the certificate is as actual a paper of the actual neuron. So it tells you where it comes, so we're buying certificates, we're buying green certificates, where we may not be having all green power, but we're buying it from a wind farm or a solar farm in this state or another state, and that helps support that, that particular entity.
Yes.
Which makes it competitive in that state and whatever.
And even folks using, that may live near a wind farm, they may be using, just where, once the electron hits, it's all a big pond, and we can't separate it out.
But, but I guess the point that, because this is confusing, I just want to get across, is that by, if we choose a 100% renewable program, that is our, that's really the only way a municipality like Riverside can support the production of renewable energy.
It is, until you cut yourself off from the world and set up a wind tower, and I'm being facetious, but, you know, just, that's the only, the only way you can have assurance. And in fact, this year, I'd like to, I'll ask Dynage to give, when this year's program ends, they're always retired after the fact. I think it'd be interesting to see what they are, where they're from. We'll do that part.
So I remember a conversation last time, we opted to do it with the renewable, because we felt that that was important to the village, folks that want to support the green program. And then if those people don't want to, they can opt out and stay with ComEd, right? Wasn't that our position, how we went last year about this, right?
Yes.
So we're giving everybody the opportunity to, to embrace green energy. And if you choose not to, for whatever reason, we won't render judgment, but you can then opt out and do it through ComEd, but you have a risk of a variable market where we're hoping to lock in at a good market, in a green market. Right? They say that right?
That's important, because you, as you pointed out, ComEd's only six months.
Right.
This locks you in for 14. Do I have a motion for?
I would, I would think that if we're going to do this, we're going to do the 100%, the 100% renewable. I don't think there's any reason to do this if we're not going to do the renewable.
So do you need that as a specific motion or just a direction from the board?
I would think we'd need a motion saying Dynage for, whether it be 12, 14.
A specific, a specific provider.
Approve the ordinance with the 14-month, 100%.
Okay, so, and is that already, so I'd need a separate motion other than the one we already know?
Let's just say, is there a consensus among the board to do the 14-month Dynage 100% renewable?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Trustee Peters?
Yep.
You agree? Okay.
So with that, we can just approve the ordinance.
Any further discussion? Thank you very much.
I do have a question, if I may, President Sells. So last time, you renewed 100%, everyone was automatically enrolled in that, and the only other option is ComEd. I'm wondering, would you want to choose to let people stay and opt down? Let's still maybe say a little bit versus ComEd, but opt, I'll call it a step down into brown energy, or just kind of leave that to the side and let them go to ComEd? That's just an option? Maybe it's not a big deal?
The difference between, the difference between ComEd at 7.1 and 100% green at 7.2 is a dollar.
Small.
The difference between 7.06 and 7.1 to go is a quarter. So I can't, it's not even, I don't think people would even figure that out.
I think the economic benefit is outweighed by the confusion.
Okay, good. I, okay, just want to clarify. I think that's a great choice, so, just asking. Thank you.
Let's call the roll.
Trustee Ballerine. Trustee Jisa.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Trustee Lumsden.
Aye.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. See you in 14 months. Okay, so that's the ordinances and resolutions. Now we're just going to have a general discussion regarding some public park restrictions. And just before Manager Frances goes through this, where we kind of are on this, this was sent for an initial discussion by the Parks and Recreation Board. Unfortunately, they did not have a quorum at that meeting. So they talked about it a little bit, but because they didn't have a quorum, they weren't able to give any kind of formal recommendation. So what I was hoping we could do tonight is just talk about this concept. You have a very roughly drafted sample ordinance here that would kind of give just some general parameters. We could talk about if there are other things we might want to add in, in here. And then I would like it to go back to the Parks and Recreation Board after we've had our preliminary discussion, so that they can kind of look at it in depth, give us their advisory opinion, give our residents a chance to weigh in on this if they would like to, and then we can, you could come back. And at some point, once we, if we get, if we get the concept that we want, then it would, we would turn it over to our village attorney to really beat this up and draft it with more of the lawyerly things that I know that our village attorney would like to have in. So, there's your Francis.
Thank you. Section in the village code that is titled Public Parks Restrictions was last revised in 1987. This portion of the code outlines the current restrictions regarding boating, picnicking, canoeing, and fishing. There has been a growing interest in enhanced utilization of the river by residents. Mostly, most recently, the Parks and Recreation Department facilitated the first fishing derby with the assistance of President Sells. The event had a waitlist due to its popularity. Additionally, residents enjoy kayaking on the river, and during special events, the village waives the prohibition of picnicking. One of the remaining items within the CMAP Central Business District Plan was to enhance recreational connections to the riverfront. The village should capitalize on the asset that is the river. This enhancement has happened in an incremental manner. However, the interest of various recreational activities continue to grow. Based on the discussion and direction of the village board this evening, staff will draft an ordinance reflecting the recommended changes to the village code for adoption at upcoming board meeting, and this will be after feedback from the Parks and Rec Board. And you have the redlined revision, as President Sells said, the rough draft of what potentially the revision could be.
And since it's so short, and for the folks at home who don't maybe have it in front of them, let me just read through it really quickly. The, from the 1987 ordinance, basically prohibited everything. It said you couldn't fish, you couldn't picnic, you couldn't launch a canoe or kayak, you couldn't pull a canoe or kayak out. You basically could look at the river, and you could walk through the park. That was basically it. So this, again, this is just sample language, but it addresses some of the concerns that I've already heard, I think, from residents who are afraid that this is going to be some kind of completely open-ended process here. No person shall operate or drive any motorized vehicle upon or across any public park, parkway, or any navigable river or stream located within the village except for police, emergency, or other authorized vehicles. No person shall operate or drive any motorized, motor-propelled sled or snowmobile upon or across any bridge or any part thereof, or upon or across any public street, sidewalk, alley, or highway within the village, again, except for police, emergency, or other authorized vehicles. Fishing is prohibited from any bridge within the village. No person shall launch or retrieve any boat or other water vessel from, from or within any public park or parkway except at locations approved by the Parks and Recreation Department. Any picnic, outing, or gathering of more than 10 people in any public park or parkway within the village must obtain a permit from the Parks and Recreation Department at least 24 hours prior to such picnic, outing, or gathering. And no fire, open fire or grill is permitted with any public park or parkway with the exception of the scout cabin, where village authorized fire pits and grills are permitted pursuant to a permit obtained from the Parks and Recreation Department at least 24 hours prior to the use of such fire pits or grills. So that would be, that's the ordinance in itself. There's already timeframe put on our parks. They're from nine o'clock, they close at nine o'clock in the, at night. And also, the other concerns that I've, I've heard typically have been noise, littering, drinking, smoking, large groups, inflatables, all of which are prohibited already by our village code and other locations. So my interest in bringing this out for discussion is, we're Riverside. I mean, we were founded because of our connection and our intimate connection to the river, our natural beauty, and the natural access and use of the river, which is exactly what Olmstead intended for our village. So this would be, in my opinion, is kind of unfinished business. It's going back to our roots and what our legacy really is intended to be. And as, as Manager Frances mentioned, it was also a major tenet of the CMAP plan, that we should look at ways to try to enhance access to the river and use of the river and our natural resources. So that is, that is my, my purpose, and to Ms. Bowman's question earlier, that is the benefit to our residents, is to reengage our, our village with its defining iconic element. So with that, I'd open it up for discussion with the trustees.
Couple things. I do agree with the letter that we received that the, that park, parkways should be removed from that. I mean, if we're going to allow picnicking, it should be in the designated parks that are under jurisdiction of the Park and Recreation Department. Those parks have proper receptacles for garbage. We don't have garbage cans in our parkways. So I think it should be in our, in our, in our designated parks, recreation parks. 24 hours, I think, is, is two, it would have to be at least 72 hours. Someone wants a picnic on a Sunday, the recreation offices are closed on Saturday. So I think it'd have to be at least 72 hours. If someone's going to use scout cabin or the, or the fire pit or the grill at the scout cabin, and a permit is going to be established, I think a deposit needs to be taken because those are, those are village assets that they'd be using. Plus, they have an open fire, you know, it'd be nice to be able to...
And you want that one 72 hours also, right?
I would, I would say, oh, that has to be at least 72 hours. You know, the boat launching, I, I, you know, Trustee Lumsden had brought something up earlier that the boat launch over on the other side of First Avenue, people tend to, you know, launch their, or portage their boats there to get rid of their garbage, put their canoe on their, on their truck and take off, and, and so I don't, I don't, I don't know. I'm still working on this boat launch thing. I don't, I don't know. I don't know if, you know, I, I like the idea that, I like the, the, the thought process and the, and the concept of people coming down the river and seeing beautiful Riverside and pulling their canoe off to the side and park it, and then run to our, you know, our restaurants and have a lunch, and then jump back in their canoe and head on. But we don't have any area to park your boat. We don't have any, you know, area to secure your boat or lock your boat. So we don't have the facilities necessary for some of that. So I, I, I think that probably has some capital to be put into, but I don't know. I, I'm just thinking ahead of myself. We do require a permit for some... We do require permit for someone to use our soccer field still, correct?
We do. All of our permits are either relegated to any of our parks or playgrounds or the scout cabin. And they have to, they have to acquire a permit for those. Our number is actually eight, anyone over eight. Because nine, we consider a team because we put it in terms of the baseball fields. But previous discussions have been either looking at that number, looking at designated locations. We already have those spots in place and we already offer permits for those designated spots, so that would be easy enough to do.
And we don't do that necessarily because we don't want people to use our parks. We do that because we have a lot of people that use our parks. And we just need to, you know, you can't have two teams show up and one team that we know is going to be there and another team gets there first, and then it's a problem. So I just want to make sure that that's still in place.
What I tell residents all the time is you're, you're not really paying for the usage, you're paying for the priority. So the parks are open to anyone that wants to show up. But if you want a designated event at that designated time, this allows you to reserve that and you have the priority with that rental. So if other groups, you know, show up for a practice or just recreation, you have the priority of that field.
I've got a couple. I've got a couple of these. And Frank and I, the, the boat launch piece. I just worry about when we start to say you have to do it in a designated location, that we end up with a whole bunch of signs that say, you know, don't park your boat here, don't park your boat here, here's where you can park your boat. I, I don't want to see a bunch of signs along there. I see the river as an awesome opportunity for passive usage, where it's not, it's not, this is the boat waterway or whatever, this is a passive usage. I do think we could, in order to protect vegetation and the way we plant the edge, make areas more convenient to pulling your kayak out of, like I do, right? And I think that, that that's a good thing. I think the challenge is, is that if we really start to designate where that's at, there'll be some unforeseen consequences, like now do we need to have a handicap accessible boat launch? Then do we need to have restrooms there? Is it a collection point? Will people start driving their pickups and trailers, which is covered by no motor vehicles down there, to pick up ten or eleven of them, right? So I like the idea of opening up our river, river to usage, but I just want to make sure that we are very, very sensitive to any unforeseen consequences when we do open it up, for all the reasons that, that people speak to. I have one email that I would like to share that I think is, is worthy of reading from one of the peeps out there. Says, "I am voicing my opinion that until I am convinced otherwise, I am opposed to reversing the fishing and picnicking laws in the village. There are many access points to the river and picnic areas surrounding us, and the incremental traffic is more of a liability than an added value to our community, in my opinion. Speaking specifically to Swan Pond, our resources barely can maintain the area, and increased outside use will only worsen that situation." So they asked me to share that. And again, I think we need to take a look at that as an unforeseen consequence. I love the fact, and my son's one of them, that currently illegally fishes along the river at nine years old. I'll, I'll confess that. But they are having a blast. There's ten or fifteen kids that routinely are down there right out in front of our house fishing and having a great time. We need to provide an opportunity to do that where they're not doing it illegally. There are a lot of people that are now starting to take advantage, including myself, of kayaking on the river. You know, I don't know if we can do a button, a riverside button, that then we would have a map of where the designated areas that they could pull out, something like that. And we got, I think we can be creative in the way we do this. So if you want to be a riverside resident and you want to be able to pull your kayak out in the river, you go to Village Hall, you get a button, it could be a sticker like that, and we have them sign kind of the riverside rules to go on the river. It means you can't pull it out in the middle of wildflowers or something like that, where we have a bunch of people dragging their kayaks and tromping through something, right? The last thing we want is, is somebody to do a nice monarch bed and then all of a sudden the canoers and kayakers drag through it or the picnickers trample it, right? So I think we have to control how we handle this. But I do think we need to open it up, make the river so that we all get a chance to use it, want to use it.
And I struggle with that too. I mean, I, I live around Blooming Bank and, and right there under the trestle is, is kind of a commonplace for people to take their kayaks down and launch their canoes. And it's a natural kind of spot to do it.
There's another one that's a real natural, easy one over on Groveland. We talked about it in our interview the other day. There's a couple really natural spots to do it. And rather than a big sign that says, "Here's your canoe launch," I think we can come up with a better plan that's more passive, where people come in, you get a button on your kayak, there's a little safety guide from the state, and then connected to that is the rules of riverside. And it says there are four locations where we have kind of made it so that you can easily get out of there, right? I think something like that would make a lot of sense.
So, so just speaking on behalf of people that have brought this up to me, and my thoughts as a resident. I guess, Ron, scout cabin, you can pick to get the scout cabin, correct?
You can't because it's, it's under a permit.
And that's under a permit, okay.
That's one of the designated.
My concern, and I've talked to people about this before, would be the, would be the garbage issue and the resource issue from a, from the police department perspective. I know we already have some limitations there. And, and I think that the thought of being able to police that in addition to everything else with our skeleton crew right now would be, would be difficult. You know, when I walk along the river, I get frustrated because of all the trash that's down there. And, and I, I feel like those are some of the most beautiful areas of the town. And, and my concern would be that more trash would show up there. And if I go to Turtle Park, and it's no fault to the, to the, to the public works, but if I go there, there's always trash on the ground. You know, I'm picking it up, throwing the garbage cans. It might be a, a, you know, pouch with, of applesauce or whatever it is, but there's always something on the ground. And I, and I, my concern would be, and I think that what the residents are concerned about, is that if we, if we open this up, there might be some risks from a, from a, I love the beauty of riverside, but I think there might be some risk from a cleanliness perspective. And, and how, you know, how do you manage that? That, that would be my primary concern. And then with regard to the river, I mean, I, I love seeing the people go and kayak down there. I love seeing it fly fishermen down there, down there swimming, or down there fishing. I, I, I think it's fantastic. I think the derby was an incredible idea. I'm wondering if, if, if there's a way to sort of ease into some of that, rather than just jump in full, full force. The derby, you know, maybe, maybe there's derbies to see how that goes. Because if you do go down there, again, I go back to the trash, right? You always, you see, you see more trash in specific areas, I think, depending, because there's more people in the, in that area doing certain things. That's just fine. I'm getting some of the feedback from what people have given me.
Yeah, just, that's, 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 I think, has always been the concern.
Correct.
But I, Doug, you said something a little bit earlier about with the building permit. You know, if we have it at five hundred dollars, we may, we automatically create all these people who are doing things illegally. When I walk, when I walk through town and I, and I see a family in Guthrie Park with their blanket out, with their kids, and I think, oh, they're breaking the law. That just seems so incredibly ludicrous to me. That, that, and these, you know, I don't know whether they're residents from riverside or whether they're not residents from riverside. But the, that, that we, it just seems so thematically and almost philosophically contrary to what, to what our community is, is supposed to stand for with regard to our relation to nature, that, that we're not going to let a mom and dad and their kid sit under a tree and have a sandwich. Or that these fourteen kids that you see going down to the, to the river every day, riding their bikes with their fishing poles, that, that, that they're, that we're making what they're doing illegal. That, that just, and so then, then we get into this really complicated policy thing. Because then what we're saying is, well, we're just going to turn our, our eye to that. We're going to have a law that we're not going to enforce, except if there's an issue. I would say a better way from a jurisprudential standpoint and a, and a policy standpoint would be, I mean, I remember when trustee, when trustee Collins was on the floor, she said something one time. She said, "I think you have to have a reason to make it illegal." That's the threshold before you start making prohibitions. That's the threshold that you have to make, as opposed to the other way. So I, I just wonder how much of, how much of the, the kind of the concern and the anxiety that people have about this would really be borne out by people who are coming to a place and, and to take part in an activity because, because it's beautiful. That's why they're doing it, is because it's beautiful. Trustee Fallon?
A, a couple of comments. One is just a side note. I know for a fact that some kids who go down there and fish, they know it's illegal and they're doing it. That's not good. What does that tell the kids about local municipal government? So that's a little side note. Second comment I'd have is, I think these are all valid concerns and we're just beginning this process and I'm anxious to see what Parks and Rec Board and others have to say about it. My general feeling is we should do something, whatever it is, but we should definitely do something. And in terms of unintended consequences, this can be revoked at any board meeting. It's simple. If there's a problem and this is out of hand, we'll, we'll either tweak it to fix the problem, or if we think we can't fix it, we'll go back and eliminate it. It's simple.
Well, one of the things I would think is if we had any kind of, I mean, I agree with what you're saying about a mom and dad sitting with Guthrie Park with their sandwiches. Under this, they wouldn't need a permit to do that. And, and I think they would be able to do that in any designated park. But if you're going to get a permit, if you're going to bring eight people to town, or, or you have eight people in town, I think the, the permitted areas need to be restricted, where there is only one place in town that can hold, I don't, I don't, that can hold the trash, because the scout cabin has a dumpster. Everywhere else has, has trash receptacles.
It has a restroom.
And it has.
Scout cabin has restrooms if you rent it.
Does have restrooms if you rent the scout cabin. But that, I guess that wouldn't be a prerequisite to have that area. So I'm, I'm thinking if there's, you know, that would alleviate a lot of this, this tension that, to trash and stuff like that. Because you can't just bring eight people down to, or twenty people down to Swan Pond. And, and you know what? If you, if you did, there wouldn't be a place to put the garbage. So I think, I think that that all, I think, will be thought of and worked out. I'm, I'm wondering, and I like the fishing idea. I'm wondering if there's some way we could tie the, the fishing restriction to age. I mean, what age do you have to be to get a fishing license?
I think it's over twelve. I think, I think over twelve you have to have a license.
What's the cost of a fishing license? I mean, that's what I thought about when I was reading this, was is there, is there a cost? Because if you're wanting to use it regularly, are you taking it seriously?
There is a cost. I want to, I want to say it's a hundred and fifty, but I could be, I could be wrong about that.
I don't, I don't think, that's, that's pretty, it could be.
I'm not sure.
I do live in Illinois. So I don't, I'm, I'm.
We have Google going as we speak.
I'm still, I'm still, I, I like the fishing. I'm, I, that, that part kind of worries me. I mean, we've been here for a long time and that fishing on the other side of the river has, has had its ups and downs, to say the least. And I think part of that history is what brought this to fruition in the first place. And a lot of that has been, I think, remediated by the enforcement from Cook County and Lyons and Forest Preserve. But, you know, there wasn't a time where that, that wasn't a good, that wasn't a good scene over there. And I think that's going to put a lot of people back on their heels. So I think we have to figure that part out very carefully.
I think that's right. That, and, and actually at the derby, and some other folks had mentioned this, in terms of the, where it says here prohibited from any bridge, that should probably also include language or as otherwise posted. Because there are, there are some spots, for example, kind of perpendicular to Mill Bridge, the bridge, the railings there, where you look over where the, where the hotman used to be. You can, you can fish from there, but you can't properly, properly release from there. So could you, so anything that's elevated like that, you would probably want to have a restriction on fishing at a location like that anyway.
Fifteen dollars.
Fifteen dollars. So I was close. I'm on the, I'm on the ten-year plan.
And in riverside, it's a hundred and fifty.
Yeah, in riverside, it's a hundred and fifty. So any other comments on this?
I think the only, the only one is, we started to talk about this. I was wondering, when I see drive any motorized vehicles, I'm curious if we can add the word gas-powered, because most of the time it's a noise issue. Because there's so many great electric bike companies that are trying to get into the marketplace right now, that I hate to see us rule out the opportunity for somebody to have one of those cool little electric motorcycles these days, but.
But we still wouldn't let them ride across the park.
Well, I, I'm just saying that, that they're just bikes that have the electric motors on them. So instead of, you know, for older guys like me, I think.
But even a regular bike, you wouldn't want people riding a bike through areas.
No, I meant just like riding along that, the bike path.
I think he's talking about those bikes that have that little motor that sits on.
I know, but, but we still, but you wouldn't want anything like that actually in a, in a grassy park. You would want a, a path, like a bike path.
I, I was, when I read that, I was referencing kind of the asphalt path that we had, yeah. So I was just kind of thinking about, you know, because that's the marketplace there, but again, that's, that's getting down to the nitty-gritty. I mean, I empower police officers to do the right thing on these things. And if it's a nuisance, they take care of it. If it's not, it's not, right? So I kind of want to give them the freedom to do that and stay that way. But I, again, I think, I think we need to figure out something. Because the other thing too is, is, you know, we all, we all keep talking about how do we beautify the river's edge? How do we keep it natural but have it controllable so it's not, you know, not just weeds and things like that? And, and along with the monarch program, and there's a lot of folks in town that, that, from a landscape perspective, that are willing to help and volunteer. We've had some volunteers, we've talked a little bit about how to redo Swan Pond and that. That's another way to get people down and enjoy the river, is to have some of these programs where we have some of the great landscapers that we have in town help promote a section of the river and we replant it into some, you know, more native process. So I think there's really good opportunities to take what we see at the library and the schools and the plantings and some of those things and, and drive that closer to the river. You know, like if those pictures right there had some of the kids down along the river planting in life jackets, I hope. But I think that would go a long way to get people back to the connection to the river, right? I mean, I think we have a great opportunity to do some of those things.
Anything we can do to enhance our connection.
Yeah, because I mean, I recently walked from scout cabin, there's a small little trail that runs right along the river, scout cabin north, and came out over there by your place. And it's gorgeous back in there, right? Absolutely gorgeous, you know? If there's a way we can get people to, to walk safely along the river there without having it to be a boardwalk that you have to have, you know, it's just a really nice, nice opportunity.
Were you jumping behind scout cabin?
When I.
It is where you're at, right?
There's a little path right back in there.
Yeah, that's a nice spot.
Oh, it's beautiful back in there.
It's gorgeous. There's, it's just beautiful back there.
Yeah.
And I love this trail. I, I know Mike Foley, former trustee Foley, said that there used to be, many here, maybe you remember this one, said there used to be a boat launch right beside scout cabin.
Yeah, there was, yeah. Yeah, something like that. Isn't that gone?
Yeah, I walked down there the other day, you, you kind of see, you can kind of see where maybe it used to be, but it's gone, it's gone.
There's a, again, I think, I think through planting materials and getting it so we can have some non-erosion spots and some planting around there, we can make several convenient launch locations and, and retraction locations without it looking like a boat ramp or a boat business or a fuel dock or something like that, right? Just a small little gap with some gravel coming up there and it's a great place to, to yank out and be done with it.
So trustee, uh, Attorney Morris, did you, you, I saw you taking notes as people. Can you, can you, because I'd like to, what I'd, I'd like to send what we talked about here tonight to Parks and Rec, since we already kind of fleshed some of this stuff out.
I would also recommend Parks and Rec. Maybe you could send an email out to them when, when this gets up on YouTube. It'd be, I, I find it extremely helpful to watch the plan commission meetings before we come here and talk. Maybe they can, they can watch this and they, then they know exactly what we're talking about.
But you just, and I, I really appreciate what trustee Gisa said. I mean, I, and also what trustee Valerie said. I mean, I, I have a good idea of the legacy of this prohibition and why it was there. And those concerns, you know, have to be taken seriously. I mean, the concerns that Ms. Volman mentioned, especially the trash. I don't, I think the numbers, the number issue can be handled pretty easily. Certainly the inflatables and fire and drinking and all that. We're not going to allow that in our parks now. I, I, but I agree with you that probably the, the trash concern and making sure we are, we have the ability to, that where there are places where people can get rid of it properly, that's probably going to be a big, it's going to be a big component. But if you're out there watching this and you're in. But if you're out there watching this and you're interested in this, keep the emails coming. We want to hear what you have to say. Any new business this evening? Hearing none, we do not have an executive session this evening, so I'd ask for a motion that's second to...
So, who, second?
Motion by Mr. Lumsden, second of Mr. Valerie. All in favor? Vote, speaking adjourned. Thank you, Liz.